I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified Board of Education to order. There are four closed session items on tonight's agenda. Student expulsion in one case, education code section four eight nine one eight F. Collective bargaining matters discussion with negotiator Daniel Thigpen, Executive Director, Labor Relations and Government Affairs regarding CSEA Chapter 127, General Operations Support, chauffeurs, teamsters, local number 150 Transportation, Supervisors, Teachers and Certificated Supervisory Units, and regarding nonrepresented groups, Management and Confidential Units, Government Code Section five four nine five seven dot six. Two Personnel Matters, Government Code Section five four nine five seven. Public Employee Appointment Employment Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Superintendent's Evaluation. We do not have any speaker cards on the closed session agenda items. We will now move into closed session and will return to open session at 6:30 PM. I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified Board of Education back to order. The meeting is being audio and video recorded and the recording may capture sounds and images of those attending this meeting. The recording will be posted on the district's website. Board meetings are being held in person in the boardroom at the district office and the community is welcome to attend. The meeting may also be viewed on the district's YouTube channel where it will, where it is being livestreamed. Please stand for the Presentation of Colors by the Castle Rowway Fundamental High School Air Force Junior ROTC.
Forward. Helligard. Ready. Ace. Freezing. Arms. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in creation, God, invisible, for the existence of. Order. Arms. Ready. Ace. Forward. Arch.
Good evening and welcome. I'm Zima Creason, Board President. To my left is Ms. Pam Costa, Board Vice President. To her left is Mr. Saul Hernandez, Board Clerk. And to his left is Mr. Ben Avi, Ms. Paula Viescas and Ms. Tanya Krevcheck, Board Members. To my right is Superintendent Melissa Bassinelli. And to her right is Administrative Assistant Stephanie Cunningham. Individuals who are attending the meeting in person and would like to offer a public comment, we ask that you complete a speaker request card available at the staff table and you will be called on at the appropriate time during the agenda. Please note that Board Bylaw nine three two three limits visitor comments to two minutes per speaker with no more than thirty minutes per single topic. Time will be extended for any speaker who uses an interpreter. Please note that public comments, including your name, become part of the public record. We are now at Item D, Approval of the Minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? See, none is there a motion to approve the minutes for April twenty fifth? Moved by Ms. Viescas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Costa, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions?
Same.
The motion, thank you, Mr. Avi. The motion passes five zero with one abstention. We are now at Item E one, Recognitions. Tonight, we have three recognitions. Let's begin with California Day of the Teacher, Mr. O'Apolo.
Thank you to President Creason, Board Member Superintendent Bassinelli, Mrs. Cunningham. I'm here tonight to present the superintendent's recommendation that the governing board adopt May tenth as Day of the Teacher. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the, that the board have Resolution A four twenty five, recognizing teachers. Annually, our district recognizes teachers for their dedication and outstanding work performed on behalf of the students. California Day of the Teacher is celebrated in May in accordance with the California legislation and Education Code. San Juan Unified School District inspire, teachers inspire and nurture students in early childhood education, elementary K eight schools, secondary schools and adult education programs. San Juan Unified Teachers touch the lives of our students and our families and of our community. And I am pleased tonight to have Barry Roth, the President of the San Juan Teachers Association, here to thank the board for their support of our teachers. Mr. Roth.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. I just want to take a moment to thank everyone here. And a year ago, on Day of the Teacher, I had said, this is the most difficult year in public education. And while I wasn't lying, I think we're all in agreement that there's no denying that, in fact, and unfortunately, this year is the most difficult year. But when you take into consideration all the barriers and challenges that our practitioners have to take on every day. But when you get onto a campus and you get to get into a program or a classroom and you get to maybe even participate or at least observe what's going on, you see nothing less than the very best education possible. Our teachers don't quit, as you know. They do not give up. They're incredibly committed to their students. And also to that commitment, folks in this building, I very much appreciate the work of the board and the folks who work here every day and your commitment to serving our practitioners and our students so that we can deliver that best education. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, this is an action item.
Thank you so much. Any questions, comments from the board? Ms. Viescas.
At the appropriate time, I would like to move the item, but I'll also take the opportunity to just say thank you for both being here, Barry, on behalf of thousands of practitioners that we have in our district. And I wondered, this is, it came up on our agenda, if we intentionally do it on, in May, because May is the hardest month, I think. People are, you know, just really holding on at this point. And I know that it felt like May came earlier this year and it seems to be the case every year that the kind of chaos of May starts to creep into the school year a little bit earlier and earlier. But our gratitude is there year round and thank you very much for showing up every single day. I'm inspired to do the work that I do because of the teachers that I had, many of whom are still teaching in this district. So carry that with me every single day and I feel a lot of respect and gratitude for all the practice. Thank you all for showing up every.
And I'll just add, of course, just so thankful for everything that you do every single day. I mean, there's some students that connect more with teachers than family members at times. Teachers are family members in so many different ways and you go through so much. You're on the front lines of so many issues. You do so much more than just teach every day. In some cases, mental health providers or at least connectors, healthcare, you know, first line. There's just so much, I could go on and on. So just deep gratitude and appreciation for all that you do every single day. It's not an easy job. And with that, is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number A four twenty five, proclaiming May tenth as California Day of the Teacher? Moved by Ms. Viescas, is there a second?
Second.
Let me give that to Ms. Krevcheck because her light was on. Second by Ms. Krevcheck, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That was unanimous. All right, our next recognition is for Classified School Employee, we, Employee Week, Mr. O'Apolo.
Thank you, President Creason, Board Member Superintendent Bassinelli, Ms. Cunningham. I'm here tonight to present the superintendent's recommendation that the governing board adopt Resolution A four twenty seven, proclaiming May twenty first to the twenty seventh as Classified School Employee Week. Every year, the district recognizes classified employees for their dedication and outstanding work they perform on behalf of students, staff and our community. Classified school employees contribute to the establishment, promotion of a positive instruction environment and play an instrumental role in providing essential services to our students. Classified school employees provide a safe and conducive learning environment to our students and ensure the district's goals for teaching and learning. And I am here, I'm pleased tonight to have Adora Clark-Gwynn, President of the California School Employees Association, to accept this resolution and thank the board for their continued support of our classified employees.
Good evening, President Creason and distinguished Board Members. It is with great honor that I stand before you tonight and accept this recognition. Classified staff comprise over fifty-four percent of all staff in our district and support San Juan students in a variety of ways. A student's school day may begin with an LVN accompanying them on a bus, a nutrition service worker providing them with a warm breakfast or a campus monitor ensuring that they safely get from their parents' vehicle and onto campus. Throughout the day, these indispensable, inspiring and invaluable individuals provide essential support in our classrooms, cafeterias, playgrounds, libraries, offices and campuses. The snapshot I just described doesn't even begin to capture the countless seen and unseen activities classified staff perform day in and day out. The magnitude of their impact and support is immeasurable. Classified staff truly are the backbone of San Juan Unified School District and I cannot express enough my appreciation for each and every employee. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Any questions, comments from the board? Ms. Krevcheck.
I also will move the item, but first I would like to express my personal appreciation. And I was remiss to not comment the first time, so I'm gonna do a little two for one here. And just really thank everyone who chooses to serve children. Last week, we had the Spirit of San Juan Awards and got to hear the most amazing stories about certified and classified staff who really pour their heart and soul into the work that they do every day and it really makes a difference. I have never been called, what was it, Mr. Ronnie said, you're my homie and I love you. I'd love for someone to say that to me. If you earn that respect and love of a child, that's amazing. And I just want to say that when I was growing up, I was an immigrant. We started school, we had some, a lot of classified staff who went above and beyond to pour into my life. And I'm sure some of those things are like no longer in ed code and not legal. But one of the things that happened is we got these little vouchers for Pizza Hut or something for good behavior or something. Those vouchers wouldn't have done anything for us because there wouldn't be anyone who could take me to the pizza place to get my free pizza. So there was Mrs. Hass in I Elementary School who would come to our apartment on a Saturday afternoon, pick up all the Ukrainian kids who couldn't go there and she would take us to that pizza place. She's like yard duty, she didn't need to do that. So I, and I know that happens all the time. Everyone goes above and beyond because they want to be there and they love the kids and they're just doing their best to make them smile, improve their day, do whatever they can. And I just really, really appreciate and wholeheartedly move this item.
Thank you, Ms. Krevcheck. Any other comments, questions from the board? Making sure I don't mess up. Okay, well, I have a couple of comments too, so. I love your tagline, CSEA is the heartbeat of our schools. Like, yeah, you are, you know, this, it takes a team and it takes a village to make education work for kids. Just like I said, for teachers, there are some students that are closer to other team members at certain times in their lives than they are sometimes their teachers, sometimes their own family members. I will never forget when I took my own son, you know, at the, at the beginning of the pandemic, it was the CSEA team that was out there making sure kids were fed. Front lines before there was enough masks. And we had Paula's mama making masks for everybody. I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Viescas's mama was making masks for folks. But you were out there doing this to make sure our school community had food and nutrition with the understanding, there's so many kids that they rely on us for food. So just so appreciative of everything that you do every single day. I know it's not an easy job to everyone in the room, four more weeks, that's eight, four more weeks. But what you do every single day does not go unnoticed, so please, please accept my gratitude. And with that, I know we have a motion to adopt Resolution Number A four twenty seven, proclaiming May twenty first through twenty seventh as Classified School Employee Week. So moved by Ms. Krevcheck, do we have a second? I'm sorry, second by, you guys are throwing me off with that, second by Mr. Hernandez. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. All right, and our final recognition is for National Speech Pathologist Day, Dr. Calvin.
Good evening, President Creason, Members of the Board, Superintendent Bassinelli and Ms. Cunningham. The superintendent is recommending that the board adopt Resolution Number A four two six, proclaiming May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three as National Speech Pathologist Day. Speech pathologists provide and deliver a continuum of speech and language services and supports to increase student learning, speech and language skills. Here to accept the resolution is Speech Pathologist Joanna Bodis and Director of Special Education Vanessa Adelson.
Superintendent Bassinelli and esteemed members of the San Juan Unified School Board, on behalf of the Speech Department, I graciously accept this certificate of recognition. Our team supports over thirty-five hundred students in our district with a team of fifty-eight speech-language pathologists and eleven speech-language pathology assistants. As the communication experts, our roles include screening, assessing, diagnosing and treating students with various speech and language concerns. From providing individualized, specialized care to students who stutter, those with LISP or those who can't quite get their Rs, to building functional language skills for students with various developmental disorders, including autism, intellectual disability and learning disability, we strive to ensure all students in this district have a voice. Speech-language pathologists and speech-language pathology assistants are therapists, yes, but we are also advocates, innovators, campus leaders and mentors. Again, I thank the entire board for recognizing this district's dedicated speech-language pathologists and speech-language pathology assistants, some of whom are present at tonight's meeting.
Thank you so much. Any comments, questions from the board, Ms. Viescas?
Some mic issues, can you, where, it is live, wonderful. Thank you very much for being here and thanks as well to the crew who has represented there in the back. You said it perfectly, which is particularly during this meeting, we like to emphasize a lot, listening to and capturing student voice. And if they can't find theirs, then it's just a little bit quieter. And so you guys have dedicated your entire careers to making sure that students have those voices to share with us. And that's incredibly critical work at every part of development. So thank you for dedicating your lives to that important work. And we know that your caseloads are high and that the work is hard. But I appreciate you again, showing up every single day with your creative minds, ready to go to meet the needs of all of our students. Thank you.
We're in a celebration, let's keep clapping. Any other comments, questions from the board? I just want to note, thank you for all you do again. And I learned, I'm gonna be a hundred percent transparent, I didn't know a whole lot about the role of your work until I entered into this position and then learned the breadth of what you do and what that means in a student's life. It's tremendous and it's not headline news so often, but it literally changes lives and changes trajectory and success in education in so many ways. So thank you so much for all that you do. Is there, is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number A four two six, proclaiming May eighteenth as National Speech Pathologist Day? Moved by Ms. Viescas, is there a second? Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Costa, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. Another round of applause and I think we do have another. Ms. Costa.
I just wanted to thank all three of the groups that spoke tonight. To our teachers, we have the best, I think, of any district. And I feel we are so blessed by our amazing teaching staff. You are true professionals. And to our classified employees, I agree with the heartbeat. You really make every day a difference for students and for teachers and for the parents who come into our offices and who connect with you in so many different ways. And I have such great appreciation for our speech pathologists because we are utilizing services not from San Juan right now, but maybe soon. And I have always appreciated, the whole time I worked in San Juan, our speech pathologist, because you change the course of kids' lives. And I see some principals and in all the years that I was a principal, I didn't know that there was Principal Appreciation Day and there was last week. And so also thank you to our principals who go above and beyond. So we have, I think, the stellar personnel group of any district around. Thank you all.
Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, Ms. Creason. I, I realize that we acknowledge the speech.
Pathologist.
Pathologist here tonight, but I really would like, if there's any teachers here, we ask you to please stand up so we can recognize you as well as all our CESDA members. Would you please stand up for just a second? Thank you so much.
Thank you again. We are at Item E two, High School Student Council Reports. Tonight, we will hear from student representatives from El Camino Fundamental High School and Rio Americano High School. Welcome in, let's begin with Naiela Reyes-Guerrero from El Camino.
Good evening, President Creason, Members of the Board, Superintendent Bassinelli and Ms. Cunningham. My name is Naieli and I am the ASB President at El Camino Fundamental High School. I'm super excited to speak on behalf of my school today about what's been happening here at El Camino. Our student government class has been hard at work fundraising for the following school year. At the moment, we are working on Sportsarama, which is this Friday, and Culture Day, which will be next Thursday. The senior class is working on their last rally, senior sunset, senior brawl, and we are all so excited to be graduating soon. Selected students took part in a WASC focus group, which has since turned into our Principals Advisory Council. And with the help of student opinions and feedback, we were able to earn El Camino a six-year WASC accreditation. The Principals Advisory Council is turning their focus on different school-wide issues on campus such as increasing school spirit, mental health concerns, counseling, outreach and equity. Our visual arts program at El Camino will be having a student art show called Spring Into Summer Eagle Art Exhibition during the day on May eighteenth in the small gym. Bappa will also hold an after-school reception for parents, families and friends of participating artists. As for our drama class, we will, we will have our awards night on May sixteenth at 6:30 PM and a showcase for Advanced Drama Block Two on May nineteenth at 6:00 PM. Our choir program received superior ratings at the Golden Empire Music Festival in March, then went on to tour Anaheim to participate in a college clinic and a recording workshop with Disney. They will be closing at the school year with their final concert of the year on May twenty fourth at 7:00 PM in the Center for the Arts, as well as one of our most important traditions of performing at graduation. Our band is having their last and most popular concert, the Pops Concert, which is held on our S-Lon. It has been a successful year for the band. They were able to have their first spring tour for the first time since COVID. Students in our medical assistant program just took their national certification exam and our MAP students exceeded the national passing average for this exam. Students who didn't pass will have the opportunity to take a second exam to get certified. The senior MAP graduation is next week with twenty-two seniors receiving recognition. They will all be receiving a certificate of completion as a medical assistant. We have had sixty students already apply for the class next year, but only thirty-six students can be accepted. Currently, we have students attend their extramissions at noon, but we are looking to move into the morning so that it would be, to make it more accessible for students to do activities after school. The program is looking for new medical offices that will allow replacements to expand to other specialties. The program instructor, Dr. Contreras, is working with a grant put together by the state and surrounding schools in California to make sure pathways are aligned, making it more inclusive for the students of California to join the medical workforce. The program is called K through sixteen, Healthcare Pathways for Inclusion. We have our very own media program. We had a twenty-four hour audio-thon this weekend, which is a fundraiser where the profit gets split fifty-fifty between KYDS and our very own Eagle Eye newspaper. The fundraiser will be open until May twenty-sixth and can be found at kyds.rocks.com. Our Eagle Eye newspaper is publishing its third newspaper since COVID. They are collaborating with EPI for a mobile voiceover studio. Along with other schools in the district, El Camino participated in the SEVA last Saturday, where we had four students move on to finalists and one student move on to receive an award. More information can be found at echsnews.com. Athletics is finishing up the spring season in the next two weeks. We are getting ready to start summer conditioning for fall sports this week. CIF is adding in a new sport, girls' flag football in the fall. Info meetings are being held on campus. Boys golf moved on to section playoffs yesterday. Swim section finals were this last week. We had three girls, three girls move on to individual swims in finals and three JV girl relays made finals, as well as one varsity girls relay. The students and staff at El Camino have been doing well. We are full of eagle pride and spirit. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak to you all today. I would love to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Really great report, thank you. Questions, comments, Mr. Avi?
Thank you so much for that report. Thanks to all the seniors and I'm sure we'll have some other seniors talking today, but four years of great work. You guys have been through some, some tough times and I'm glad to hear that you're uplifting everything and bringing everything back. And I love the Principals Advisory Council. I think that's a great way to get advice from students on, on how to move forward. I will say I was particularly interested in the medical assistant program and their certificate. My day job is in healthcare and that is not an easy certificate to get. So that level of success on the medical assistant exam, that's no joke. Congratulations, please pass that on to the students. And also I'll definitely be getting the program advisor's name from the superintendent because I work in healthcare. So thank you so much for your presentation.
Any other questions, comments from the board? This will be the last time that we're gonna see you up here. And so thank you, you've done such a fabulous job. You only have four weeks left, which is just, it's mind-boggling to me. And so I'm sure it's a trip for you, right? You've done an amazing job, your leadership is exceptional, just own it. You're doing great, you're gonna be great at anything you do in the future. I had the opportunity to visit your campus, was that yesterday, Ms. Wellport? It's Allport, yes. Yesterday, I was at your campus and was able to see, you know, just, just the spirit of your school, got to see a lot of the art that's going on and just liaise with some of the wonderful students about what's working, what's not, and hear more about hopes and dreams and aspirations. So I'm really feeling very special that I'm gonna have the opportunity to be at your graduation. So I'll be the one out there cheering for you like I was your, your auntie because I am so proud of all of your accomplishments. Thank you for your report and let's do one more round of applause. Next, we will hear from Tanner Schinderly and Laney Shad, I'm sorry, Shada. Did I pronounce that right? I am so sorry. We're gonna do this again, Laney Shada from Ria.
Good evening, President Creason, Members of the Board, Superintendent Bassinelli and Ms. Cunningham. My name is Tanner Schinderly.
And I'm Laney Shada. We're here representing Rio Americano High School. We're super excited to be here tonight to share the amazing things happening on Rio's campus this past semester.
Since our last update to you, our athletics have been extremely successful. Our boys soccer team, for the second year in a row, placed second in Northern California, as well as set one sectionals this year. Additionally, our boys basketball and volleyball teams, as well as girls and boys water polo teams, were all league champions this year.
Our, our girls track relay team qualified for the prestigious UPenn Track Meet, which only the top teams in the nation compete at. Our swim team has a swimmer, Charlie Franz, who qualified for state championships and will represent Rio later this year. In terms of activities happening on our campus, we held our annual spring fling dance with nearly a thousand students in attendance. As our second largest dance of the year, it was really great to see our entire community get involved.
We also wanted to take a moment to say thank you to all of our amazing teachers. In honor of National Teacher Appreciation Week, we know our schools would not be what they are without the dedication and commitment from every single. we know our schools would not be what they are without the dedication and commitment from every single teacher on our campus. So thank you to every teacher at Rio and beyond for everything you do.
Our junior prom also went extremely well and we are looking to having our senior ball this weekend. We also held our second blood drive of the year with Vitalant, which is one of the many community service events held on Rio's campus. And then we also had our DUI court assembly for all grades on campus, which highlights the dangers of underage drinking and the importance of students being safe and aware.
Earlier this semester, we also held our first-ever ILS basketball game, which got the entire school community involved and brought out nearly 1,000 students to come and support. On May 18th, we will be hosting our second annual culture fair, highlighting the diversity on our campus and allowing for every community to share their culture with the rest of the Rio students and staff.
A few weeks ago, we held our first Spike Ball Tournament on our quad, celebrating the beginning of summer and getting kids involved through lunchtime activities. We partnered with our Spike Ball Club and we're hoping to start a tradition of partnering with clubs on campus to create a better campus culture involving all students.
This Thursday, Rio will be the host site of the district's first Leadership Development Day, which we are super excited to bring on a variety of, I think, six high schools from across the district to come and join us for our Leadership Development Day. We would also love to invite all of you to come to our annual Powerpuff Game taking place this Friday, with the tailgate starting at 4:30 and the event starting at 5:30. Tickets will be $5 at the door. All proceeds for this event go to support the WEAVE organization, which stands for When Everyone Acts, Violence Ends. Their mission is to promote safe and healthy relationships, support survivors of sexual assault, domestic violence, and sex trafficking. Join us for a fun event and to support a great cause.
Next week, we will be hosting our fifth and final rally themed The Greatest Show After The Greatest Showman. So feel free to join our Rio Circus one last time. At the end of May, we will also be hosting our annual Mental Health Awareness Week, which spotlights the resources available to students on campus, while also bringing attention to the continued need to improve the mental health systems in place.
Finally, we wanted to end by saying thank you for allowing us to represent the Rio student body here this year. While Laney will be returning next year, having just been elected to serve as our 2023 to 2024 ASB president, this will be my last time presenting before graduating. It's been an honor to be in this district since kindergarten and to build a relationship with many of you on the board now. I wish you all the best as you continue to build a safe and inclusive community for every student in our district. I will always be full of Rio and San Juan pride everywhere I go. So thank you. And at this point, we are open to any questions you have.
That was a wonderful report. Questions, comments? Ms. Viescaz?
Thank you very much for the report. There was a lot covered in both your report and the El Camino report. It's hard for me to just not get a little bit verklempt as we approach the end of the school year and hear everything that you guys are tackling here in the last four weeks. I love The Greatest Showman. I may very well try to stop by your rally. And I also love that your Powder Puff Game benefits WEVE. Tanner, actually, before you read out the acronym, I didn't actually know what WEVE stood for, to be honest, but I know that it's a very important nonprofit and community resource that does a lot of wonderful things in our entire region. I've had the pleasure to get to know you, Tanner, over the last year. And I'm very excited. For all that you will tackle, I will say, I think, like, sometimes our work is exhausting. And then I consider everything that this young man has taken on, both here at his school, in the district, and statewide. And I stand in envy of your youthful energy and can't wait to see what you tackle next. Laney, I'm so glad that we'll have the chance to get to know you a little bit better and that you'll be returning. But Tanner, I wanted to invite you, if you wanted to, to share a little bit about what your plans might be for next year.
Yeah, I'm going to be going to Cal Poly to study political science and hopefully get involved in changing our world for the better one day.
You're already doing it. So keep up the good work and thank you both for the wonderful report.
Thank you.
Paula makes great comments. You always get an applause after you're done. I love it. The other comments, questions from the board? Okay, so let's, Laney, congratulations on your win. That's so awesome. I look forward to seeing you a whole lot real soon. And Tanner, oh my goodness, I'm going to miss you. I'm going to get emotional. We have talked a whole lot. Mic drop. Literally, she just dropped the mic. It's wild. Four weeks. We're all doing the best we can. Your advocacy over the years has been absolutely tremendous. How you ask the hard questions, break down your thoughts, how you bring other people into conversations, how you stay really supportive and positive, all while really being very strong in your call to action and for change. And your collaborative spirit just rings through. I am so happy to hear that you're going to be doing political science. And if I could ever be helpful in your future endeavors, you just holler at me. You know where to find me. I appreciate you so much. I'm going to miss you standing up here and just telling us about all the wonderful things that are going on at your school. But again, just like Ms. Viesca says, Ted, you do so much for the community as a whole, not only your school site. Your love for community shines through everything that you do. So just know that I'm super proud of you and I will also be at your graduation. So I'll be that very proud auntie on the stage. We're like, that's my baby. So keep up the great work and please remember I'm a resource to you and I look forward to getting to know you in the coming year.
Thank you.
Okay, so thanks so much for your report. Student Voice is incredibly important to the board and we very much appreciate you taking the time to join us tonight. Thanks again. We do not have any reports from staff, board-appointed, district committees, employee organizations, or other district committees. So we are at item E seven, closed session expulsion actions. Mr. Hernandez?
Thank you. The board voted unanimously to accept the hearing panel's recommendation for one expulsion in case number M49. Also, the Board of Education took action in a closed session to approve and ratify the employment contract of Rebecca Toto, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. The vote was unanimous. The government code requires a verbal summary of compensation and fringe benefits. Ms. Toto's contract is effective June 19th, 2023 through June 30th, 2025, and provides for compensation for the 2022 through 2023 fiscal year in the amount of $190,904 annually and for the 2023-2024 fiscal year in the amount of $199,495. Ms. Toto will receive the same health and welfare benefits and salary adjustments as other district administrators.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. And at this time, I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Toto, who is here in the audience tonight. Welcome to the SJUSD and we really look forward to getting to know you. Welcome to the team. Okay, we are now at item F, visitor comments. We do have speaker cards for general visitor comment. Comments are limited to two minutes. The clock on the screen counts down the time. Under the Ralph M. Brown Act, the board is not allowed to comment on items that are not on the agenda, so we're not ignoring your comments. We just can't respond to any individual comments. The superintendent can refer items to staff who can follow up with you. Ms. Rai, please facilitate public comment.
Of course. We have two public commentators today. First up, we have Crystal Bernasconi.
Good evening, President Creason and distinguished board members, Superintendent Bassinelli and Ms. Cunningham. My name is Crystal Bernasconi and I'm here this evening representing our American Indian education program as a chairperson for Parent Advisory Committee. My family is from the Ruby Village of Yucuayogan, Athabaskan. I'm here to ask the board to move their American Indian education program to the Equity Department instead of where it currently is in the EL and Multicultural Education Department. The first reason that I suggest this move is because our program is to assist our native students and provide them with equity to be able to succeed in school, graduate, and have the life skills to be successful. Our native students have the lowest nearly everything as far as cast floors and graduation rates. I believe this is a direct result of lack of support for our native community. For example, when finding tutoring support, we are often redirected to online tutoring instead of in-person. Equity is part of our mission statement. The second reason I suggest this move is because our mission is to preserve our native culture. Currently, we have a member of our native community working with the Equity Department who is facilitating cultural humility trainings and working with the staff and curriculum to better reflect our culture within the district. Lastly, our native students speak English. English is their primary language and do not need EL support. They need Equity support. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. I look forward to further discussing this issue and our next steps to support our group and the students more appropriately we represent.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marissa Garcia.
Okay, so my name is Marissa Garcia. I am here to speak on behalf of my son, Jackson Gardner. He's five years old and was in a TK class at Twin Lakes. Unfortunately, he was a victim of bullying at five years old and the school district basically forced our hand and we had to pull him from the school because the options that were given were not to our standards as parents. This has been going on for about seven months. We were never notified about the verbal abuse or escalated physical abuse and even then we were never told about it. The only reason we found out was because one of his friends ended up telling us what happened in a class one day and that's when it escalated. The school offered an extra teacher to be around to try to keep the peace, but that failed twice. My son has been screamed at, punched, kicked, scratched, had his glasses ripped off his face. And we met with somebody from your district and they told us to try to let them have, allow it again with a different teacher's assistant. And when we asked what would happen if it were to hit him again, they said they would reevaluate and come back to the table. Our son is not a social experiment for somebody else's behavioral issues. The fact that was even suggested extremely, it's extremely disturbing and to use one student as a pawn to see if something could work, but potentially putting another student at risk has already failed numerous times. We were told that basically this would be an early vacation for him if we pulled him and that my son would have to deal with bullies all his life by the representative from your district. That may be true, but the fact that that was even an answer to two parents who are very concerned for their child's safety and well-being is so upsetting. You have posters all around the school district about stopping bullying and harassment.
And that was our final public comment.
Thank you for your comments. We are at item G, Consent Calendar. Do any board members wish to remove any items from the consent calendar? Mr. Hernandez? Oh, I saw your light up. Nope. Okay. Okay. Staff has requested to pull item G nine, the Arcade Lease Amendment, pardon me, because it is still pending approval from the Division of the State Architect. This item will come back for action at the May 23rd board meeting. Is there a motion to approve items G one through G eight?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Avi. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Krevcek. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That was unanimous. We are at item I one, English Learner Update. Dr. Calvin?
Once again, good evening, President Creason, members of the board, Superintendent Bassinelli and Ms. Cunningham. It is the goal of the English Learner Department to increase opportunities for English learner students by fostering a welcoming environment, providing tiered layers of support, and addressing barriers to student success. Tonight, Director Gwen Dillinger and Program Manager Inoviva Mendoza-Neverett will share information regarding our English learner community, the services that we provide, and an update on student progress. It will be followed by El Camino student Hawad Ahmadze, who will share some of his personal experiences with the board.
Next slide, please. Good evening, President Creason, members of the board, Superintendent Bassinelli, and the San Juan community. I'm proud to be part of the team supporting our students identified as English learners. Tonight, we are here to report on the diversity of the students we serve, the services we provide to their success, and how they are doing. We will end our presentation with comments from a student who has lived experience as an English learner in San Juan Unified. San Juan is home to a vast and diverse community of learners. This chart is a representation of the current enrollment of students who speak a home language other than English. While Spanish remains the most prevalent home language our students speak, the Persian languages, which include Farsi, Dari, and Pashto, if combined, make up 37% of the chart, while Spanish makes up 30%. The numbers of students from a home language of Ukraine or Russian is also increasing. This is largely due to the war in Ukraine, which has led to families fleeing from both Ukraine and Russia. This chart more clearly shows a dramatic shift in demographics from 2018-19, before the pandemic, and the current year. In each category of language, with the exception of Arabic, there has been an increase in representation. Given this shift, we have responded by hiring more cultural brokers or bilingual support staff with corresponding primary language and cultural experiences. It is interesting to note that Pashto was included in the Other category, Other Non-English, until last school year. Since the fall of Afghanistan in 2021, enrollment of Pashto-speaking students has steadily grown, so they've become their own group in this chart. Currently, about 1,000 of our students speak Pashto. This is reflected in the decline in the Other Non-English category. So that's why that's there. Oh, now it's. Get it to go back. Okay. As we can see in this graphic, while there has been consistency in the number of immigrant students who have been living in the United States for more than one year, the amount of students enrolled who have been in the country for less than one year has increased substantially. These are our newcomers. As we discuss who we serve, it's important to clarify what identifies a student as an English learner and the different categories that are included in that identification. An English learner is an emerging bilingual or multilingual student. Upon initial enrollment in an American school, parents complete a home language survey. If a language other than English is noted, the student must by law be obsessed for English proficiency. In California, we use the English Language Proficiency Assessment of California, otherwise known as LPAC. While mastering English, the goal is that students maintain their home language. Language around English learners is shifting. More and more, we are hearing the term "emerging bilingual" taking the place of "English learners." The shift in language supports valuing multilingualism. Currently, the enrollment of English learners or emerging bilinguals is close to 7,000, an increase of almost 1,000 students since 2019 at San Juan Unified. This doesn't like me.
Maybe print it.
As English learners progress towards full English proficiency, they're identified in several different terms, which are defined by educational code and legal terms. The distinction between immigrant students and refugee students is a legal one. Refugees are given special legal status as they are fleeing their country of origin for fear of persecution. They remain in refugee status for five years. Immigrant status refers to people who have been in the US for less than three years, leaving their home country for one reason or another. Additional terms are related to English language proficiency. A student who, when first tested with the English Language Assessment, LPAC, if their score was proficient, the student is not considered an English learner. They are considered English, initially fully English proficient. Long-term English learners, or LTEL, students, have not met all their criteria for full English proficiency within six years in the United States. Finally, RFEB, or Reclassified Fully English Proficient Students, are those students who have reclassified as fully English proficient. as fully English proficient. Reclassified students are monitored for four years, after which they fully exit the ELO program. School districts are monitored on how well their English learners are progressing annually through the California School Dashboard, English Learner Progress Indicator, but also known as LP. The indicator shows what percentage of emerging bilinguals are making progress toward full English proficiency. This graphic compares San Juan's English learner progress from 2018-19 to 2020-21. As you can see, the progress is about the same in 2018-19 as 21-22, with almost fifty-two percent of students making progress. That means they're increasing one English level per year. This graphic also shows the LP in comparison to the state LP. San Juan is performing slightly higher than the state average on the LP. To continue our discussion about programs and actions to support emerging bilingual students, I'd like to introduce Henaveva Mendoza Navarete, our Program Manager. Henaveva?
Good evening, esteemed members of the Board and Superintendent Bassinelli. This academic year, we have focused on hiring and retaining BIAs or bilingual instructional aides to work alongside classroom teachers to provide academic support. Sorry about that. To provide academic support, scaffolding and language development to emergent bilinguals. BIAs play a vital role in bridging the gap between students and the teacher by serving as a cultural liaison in creating a welcome, a welcoming and inclusive environment. Our cultural brokers act as a bridge between the student, family and the school community. They offer cultural insight and language support to students and families with diverse backgrounds, which is essential in creating a comfortable learning environment. The professional development team serves as instructional leaders who specialize in supporting emergent bilinguals and improving teaching practices for these students. They provide professional development, coaching and mentoring to practitioners to promote high-quality instruction and cultural responsive teaching that benefits all students. Our newcomer support team works directly with newly arrived families to help them in adjusting to a new environment. The translation and interpretation services offer an essential language assistant to non-English speaking students and parents. They serve, these services help to break down language barriers and ensure that all educational partners are informed and involved in the educational process. All of these services are crucial in ensuring that emergent bilinguals and students from diverse, multicultural, multilingual backgrounds receive an equitable, meaningful and inclusive educational experience. Now, I would like to highlight a few of our established systems of support. Upon arrival, there are enrollment technicians readily available to help families in the most dominant home languages in our district. Our onsite interpreters or community resource assistants are called to assist with the transition to connect families with any needed resources. With the funding from our Cal New grant, newcomer and refugee families receive backpacks, dictionaries and school supplies as needed upon enrollment. Students receive a welcome kit and we connect the families with the school community resource assistant who speaks their home language. We strive to offer programs which focus on the student's academic, social emotional wellness, civic engagement and societal adjustment. Additionally, our support team provides parent workshops on empowering topics for families and the community in the seven high-density languages. Building a multi-level program to support emergent bilingual students and families is a consistent collaborative effort across all district departments and our community. As a department, we recognize that schools do not exist in isolation. To keep students in school, their social, economic and family needs, as well as their academic needs must be met. They need the support and help of the whole community. For this reason, our partner organizations help our district and schools build and strengthen healthy learning environments by bringing in additional programs and services that provide opportunities for schools to connect with families and other local community agencies. Much of what partner organizations bring to schools occurs at the program level as these organizations provide direct services to students. When a student is actively engaged in the learning process, they have a curiosity to learn about different topics. Student engagement and interest begins when they feel comfortable and safe to speak out in class and take risks. A trusting classroom environment begins with community relationships that foster security and enhance real-world skills. This is a perfect segue to our next speaker. This student is a junior at El Camino High School. He has had a distinguished academic career since he enrolled in fall of 2019 and is currently an active participant in our Newcomer Student Leadership Council. Please welcome Hawada Ahmadzai.
Good evening. First of all, thank you for giving me a chance in this important meeting. My name is Hawada Ahmadzai. I'm currently a junior at El Camino Fundamental High School and a member of the Student Leadership Council at San Juan Unified School District. Almost four years ago, I came as a refugee from Afghanistan with my family. When I started my school, I knew that I was in the greatest country on the planet. I set some short and long-term goals for myself. My short-term goals were to develop my English language and technology skills. Despite that, I decided to put in a lot of effort in my classes to achieve a high GPA. My long-term goal is to become a doctor in the future. Fortunately, I got the opportunity to get enrolled in a medical assistant program in my high school. Also, San Juan gave me a lot of opportunities to work in summer school and Saturday Academy programs because of my good grades and also being trilingual. These jobs really helped me to get experience and build my capacity. During the COVID-19 pandemic, I didn't have a Chromebook to learn while distance learning. With the help of San Juan, I got a Chromebook and hotspot. During distance learning, many students, they didn't know how to use Google Classroom, Zoom meeting because like everything was online for them due to the distance learning. So an idea came to my mind and then I created a YouTube channel by my name Hawada Ahmadzai and shared it with those who needed it. It was very useful for them and I felt very happy for that. At the end, I'm very thankful from San Juan Unified School District gave me a lot of opportunities to be an excellent student today. Thank you for your listening.
That concludes our formal presentation and we're here for questions or just.
Thank you so much for that wonderful report. Questions, comments from the Board, Mr. Avi?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I myself have never been good at languages. I've tried. I've just, I've never been successful. It's incredibly difficult. Which I say that because I have so much respect for the students who are learning a second and third language while trying to adapt to everything else. I've had the pleasure of being on the the school board representative to DLAC. And I think if you want to understand the diversity of languages in the district, attend one of those meetings. And just when they're going through the initial introductions in each of the languages represented on that Zoom meeting, you will see that diversity because I feel like it takes about a half an hour just to get through a few simple statements, but that's speaking to the students. And thankfully, we're able to use Zoom to expedite it and really help people in their own languages. I do appreciate that we're recognizing it as bilingual and celebrating that. I have the honor of going to the Seal of Biliteracy with Ms. Dillinger and really celebrating the students who have achieved biliteracy and recognizing that as a real success in their life because they will be able to fully utilize multiple languages. And I also want to compliment the team, the English Language Learner Team. I think COVID was incredibly difficult for English language learners. I think the remote environment was not conducive to being as successful as in-person is. So while, you know, I'm excited that we're above average on some of the state exams. I think that there's a lot of opportunities for us to get even better. As we're back full-time in person, we can really work with all of those students even more. I think there's a lot of opportunity that we can grow into. And I think we're really well versed for it as a district. I feel like this district, more than others, has really embraced the diversity of culture, the diversity of language and leaned into the ability to do that. So I'm excited. It's been a real learning opportunity for me to be involved in DLAC. And I'm thankful for all the work that you are doing. And congratulations to all of the San Juan students that received the Seal of Biliteracy. That's a pretty significant accomplishment.
Any other comments, questions from the Board? I just wanted, just so thankful for the presentation and I really like the new language of emerging bilingual, multilingual students. Let's celebrate culture. I know that there was a time in education's history where I'll just leave it at celebration of culture and multilingualism was not celebrated and it was actually suppressed. And so I'm so happy and I was so bummed that I couldn't attend the Seal of Biliteracy event this year just to due to conflicting scheduling, but that's always one of my favorite celebrations of the year. These students are so proud, as they should be, and they're doing something, as Mr. Avi said, that not a lot of people have been able to do. So just thank you for the report. Really appreciate it. Thank you so much for your advocacy and you stepped in, you saw the need for your student community and you stepped up and you did your YouTube channel. I mean, that's wonderful. So thank you for coming and sharing your story with us tonight. Okay, we are at item I two, Elementary Expanded Learning Opportunities Plan Update. Ms. Townsend Snyder.
We're doing a little communication on the clicker.
Take your time.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everybody. Board President Creason, members of the Board, Superintendent Bassinelli and Ms. Cunningham. It's great to see you again this evening. Tonight, we're excited to share with you a glimpse of what the ELO plan looks like within our elementary division. Presenting with me this evening is Cassie Bennett, our Director of Elementary and K8 Schools, in addition to Misha Plummer, Principal at Del Paso Manor Elementary School, and Melanie Allen, who is our Principal at Dedrding Elementary School. Also joining us this evening is our ELO Coordinator, Rafael Martinez, as well as some staff members from our schools who are here this evening. The parameters for the ELO plan are very similar to what was shared with you in the secondary ELO presentation, where the funding is focused on students who are in need of additional supports. A major component of our plan is the co-creation with our staff, our families, our labor leadership teams and our students as well. Finally, we make decisions about the use of funding through the implementation of continuous improvement practices, which really zoom in on progress monitoring of students so that we can identify what's working, but also we can identify what needs to be strategically abandoned. This table here shows you a high-level overview of some of the actions within the elementary ELO plan. For the elementary and K8 division, you'll find that each site was allocated with an additional staff member for core academic support. We call this an FTE or a full-time equivalent. Sites were also given additional funding allocations to address both learning or social emotional needs. And the funding formula for this allocation, just like secondary, is based on a site's overall enrollment. All school sites were allocated $10,000 for partnership projects to provide before, during, after-school and summer school learning programs to address those learning and social emotional needs. And finally, the elementary and K8 schools were also allocated instructional assistance. And we appreciate them and their support so much. They're an integral part of our classrooms. Initially, the instructional assistants were allocated for grades TK through two, but just as we do learning cycles at the school site, we do that here at the district level as well. So we got feedback from our site administrators and our staff teams and what we learned was that the instructional assistants needed to be able to move throughout grade levels where the kids' needs were. So this year, to maximize services based on that student need, the instructional assistants were not allocated to just TK two. The school sites were given the freedom to decide where they needed to be and did that based on their local control. And again, we really appreciate the support of the IAs. Want to give a shout out to them. Here is a really quick overview for you of what staffing looks like within some of the academic and social emotional support action items that I mentioned earlier. The attachments that you have also details which sites have the outlined positions and services. You can see where the students' needs are based on the school site staffing decisions shown in this table and the local control of the funding that occurs at each site. These allocations are above and beyond those allocations that are centrally funded through other state and federal funding sources such as Title I and LCFF. We've shared with you this high-level overview of both actions and the staffing decisions within those actions across all of our 41 schools in elementary and TK eight. We also felt that it was important to showcase some specific examples for you of how these decisions I'm talking about might look and sound at the site level. So later in the presentation, you will hear more about that from our two-site principals and about the staffing decisions they made and how they tweaked their decisions along the way. As an add to this presentation, we also wanted to share with you a quick little video of what it looks like from an intervention specialist's point of view from the classroom.
Hi, my name is Jo Lynn Keough. I'm the Intervention Specialist at Cambridge Heights Elementary and I work with mostly first grade through fifth grade students here. My first and primary role is to help students who are behind in either reading or math catch up. And I do that through pulling them with small groups. The other role is teaching English language development to our students who are just beginning to learn the language. So I have special groups that target just those students. And then another role I have is training and working with the IAs at our school, our instructional aides, to give them the support they need to do their jobs. We generally try to meet for at least six to eight weeks. At that point, we review. We either change the focus of the group or we switch kids in and out of groups. So it's a very fluid process. A lot of the students who are challenged readers or in math have problems with focus and attention. And so to remove them from the classroom and get into a quiet room where they have just what they need in front of them is very powerful for them. It's more effective to sometimes, just for a short time, remove that student and focus all their attention on exactly what they need to do to grow. So that's one power of the small group. The other power is that I can design instruction very targeted for a small group and I purposely form my groups based on common needs. There were our students that we know had gaps in their learning, weren't able to fully participate either in distance learning or had other reasons. COVID was difficult for a lot of families. And so what I do is I'm really trying to find those students that have gaps and teach them and help them catch up. And we've seen that happen actually with several students. I have some third and fourth grade students that really just needed help with their foundational decoding skills. They were a little bit low in comprehension and reading. But once I reviewed those skills with them and taught those, gave them some practice in reading, they were able to come right back up to grade level within the year for comprehension and reading, and that's exciting. A little first grader this year who came into first grade and he did not know all of his letters and sounds. At the back of my room, I have a bulletin board that says, "How far will you go?" And one day he turned around. And one day, he turned around and decided he was going to try to read that. And I was watching him, but he held up his hand like, "Don't help me." And he figured it out himself and he turned around and he had the biggest smile on his face. And he said, "I read it and you didn't even help me." And at that point, I knew Carter realized that he was a reader. He, even though he still struggles a little bit, he can read. And to see his confidence come is huge. I love those moments.
So to take her words off of her board, we have a long ways to go and we have gone really far. However, we recognize the needs that still exist within our system. So having seen the allocation, staffing resources, and also a little glimpse of what it looks like in a classroom with an intervention teacher, we wanted to drill down just a little further with you to show you how many students are being served. And that was at the point that the presentation was put together, so it's even greater now. You can see that over 5,500 students have been served to date. And at this time, I would like to invite Ms. Bennett to the podium to talk you through some data points as well as implementation experiences shared by the principals.
So in terms of our process for academic intervention, students with significant struggles in math or reading are either placed into intervention cycles with an intervention teacher or offered tutoring or both. Intervention is typically applied for a six to eight week cycle. Some students participate in more than one cycle. And tutoring can be short-term or ongoing as the year progresses. The data table there shows the growth students made using the I-Radi assessment from fall to winter, so approximately from August to February. The table shows the growth of only our students who received intervention support through the ELO funding. Overall, there was a decrease in the percentage of the students scoring two or three levels below standard and an increase in the percentage of students scoring proficient or above, which may be a high-level indicator that the interventions have supported student growth. As you will see in our school examples later, school sites keep their own local data to tell them in real time how students are progressing and to inform next steps. The next data table again represents the growth of only our students who received intervention support and shows that we have quite a bit of work to do as students are displaying greater struggles in math. This particular data does not separate out the students who received math intervention versus reading intervention. So it's difficult to identify exactly where the impact is from this vantage point. Again, the schools keep their own local data that points to a more detailed picture of the students' achievement and growth, which you will hear next in the report. We will continue digging deeper into the data and look at how we can amplify intervention and growth for students in math. So school sites move through a cycle of improvement multiple times through a year and make decisions as a result of what they learned over the course of that time. As the school site is planning for the upcoming school year, they plan for implementation through a needs assessment. This is where they look at the site-level data. They talk to students, parents, staff, as well as school site councils and other parent groups to determine the impact of current actions and to plan accordingly. Then they implement the actions as planned and collect data along the way using both academic and social emotional measures. The data collected helps them determine successes and challenges. Finally, they use all of what they learned to adjust those actions or strategically abandon what did not work and move through the cycle again. Now I will have our two principals demonstrate for you a more detailed look at how each of our sites have planned for their actions using their ELO funds. We have Misha Plummer, Principal at Del Paso Manor, to my left. She will share an example of how they have addressed social emotional needs. And Melanie Allen, Principal at Dedderding. And she's going to share examples of how they have supported their students' academic needs. So you'll see both. Their stories are representative of the processes and actions being implemented at each of our 41 elementary and TK through eighth-grade sites.
Good evening. During year one of ELO funding, the site used funds for intervention and field trips. We soon recognized that field trips did not have the desired impact on our focus groups. For example, a student may get to go on one or two field trips per year, which might be an amazing experience, but we had many students who needed more day-to-day support. We were able to identify other funding sources such as TITO and LCFF to support field trips and academic intervention. Given a review of academic and social emotional data, which will be shared on the next slide, as well as input gathered from the community, the site recognized that emerging needs might be better met through hiring a full-time social worker to attend to the physical, social, and emotional needs of students and families. Sabers is a social, academic, and emotional behavior risk screener that we use to identify students with the highest needs. This, along with anecdotal data through classroom interviews and observations, tells us that the social worker is having the desired impact that was needed. We also use referral data to determine the impact of actions around social emotional learning. Our Saber data, our Sabers data, as well as teacher referrals, helps us determine which students may need additional supports. Saber screeners provide risk scores for all students in three areas of development: social, academic, and emotional. As you can see in our Sabers data, in the fall of the 2122 academic year, 4.2% of DPM students scored high-risk for social, academic, and emotional behaviors. By the spring, that percentage decreased to 1.4% due to our social emotional supports, classroom interventions, and resource connections. Our social worker has supported DPM through whole-class lessons, small-group social skills instruction, as well as individual counseling and resource referrals. This position has positively impacted teachers, students, and families in very specific ways. By the end of the year, we had more students with low-risk scores in all three areas and fewer students with high-risk scores in all three areas. We look forward to administering the screening again this spring to see the positive impact our actions continue to have on the DPM community. I will now hand it over to my colleague Melanie Allen, who will share about academic interventions being offered at Dedderding.
Hello. I would like to share the process we used at Dedderding when deciding how to utilize our ELO funding to support academic achievement. Based on a review of academic data, as well as input from the staff and community, we decided to use our ELO resources to hire two intervention teachers at Dedderding. Together, the team created systems for assessing kids with agreed-upon common assessments at regular intervals and documenting scores on Google Spreadsheets that are shared between all staff. Teachers analyze this data through cycles of inquiry, and students are placed in flexible groups based on their individual areas of need. Intervention is not a reteaching of content standards, but a concentrated effort to fill holes in foundational learning skills in order for students to better access grade level standards. Dedderding works in professional learning communities called PLCs. Our PLCs are grade-level groups with our ELD and intervention teachers moving between groups to support each grade level. We use six-week cycles with common assessments like letters and the BPST or other assessments that the team creates to focus on specific standards and measure student growth. The data is shared school-wide, and every teacher is dedicated to the success of every student, not just their current students. Through the sharing of this data, we determine the needs that should be met through intervention. Our biggest needs currently are reading foundational skills in grades K through three and math support in grades four through six. We will continue to monitor our data to ensure that students are making growth and getting the support they need.
So Misha and Melanie shared specific ways they're determining next steps at their sites, and the remainder of the elementary and TK eight schools are doing the same. We use the cycles of continuous improvement to help guide our actions. Through these cycles, we analyze assessment data and ask questions to monitor progress. And we consider both satellite data, which is formal data like CAS, as well as formative and observational data collected through local assessments and what we see and hear in classrooms, staff meetings, and community meetings. Our elementary schools are using the information gathered to develop needs assessments to talk through with our site teams, their school site councils, ELAC, and other parent groups. Through this process, collective decisions will be made to inform next year's plan. As Amberly mentioned, we also progress through cycles of continuous improvement at the district level, where we ask questions as we look at the data together. After sites have analyzed their data, talked to their staff, leadership teams, school site councils, and other groups, they share with us the action items that are having the greatest impact on student achievement, both academically and in social emotional support. We have learned through our listening sessions and surveys that the top three actions that have the greatest impact that site principals hope to have continue are intervention teachers, instructional assistants, and our counselors and social workers. As we plan for the next allocation of learning recovery dollars, this will be taken into account while we work to maximize the allocation in alignment with the need. Thank you for your time as we moved quickly through some of what you'll see at the school sites as a result of the ELO and as our plan. At this time, we're open to any questions or comments the board may have.
Thank you so much for the report. Questions, comments from the board? Ms. Scruff check.
I'm going to be courteous to my colleagues. I always pause and see if anyone has anything to say. I always feel like I have something to say. But regarding ELO, I have really enjoyed the opportunity to learn more about this. And I think I've heard my colleagues make this statement, and I continue to say, "I don't know what we're going to do when these funds end." And it's been really interesting to see the local control, site by site, the decisions that schools are making. And even if they have the same type of strategy, even if it's instructional aids or language aids, whatever it is, they're still implemented differently. And today I learned that at my own daughter's school, they have something completely different that I have never heard before. And here we are almost at the end of the school year, and today was my first time that I learned this. They use part of their ELO funds to pay for like sports activities during lunch. And so they sort of trick kids into learning social emotional skills and put them into practice with fun activities. And I thought, "This is so genius." And so all that to say, thank you for the report. Thank you for what you're doing. I love this opportunity to see principals and sites be so creative and responsive to their student needs. And I am just going to have more conversations and continue to learn what we can do to keep it going somehow. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Costa.
Been having mic issues, so I've been maybe not engaging quite as much. But thank you very much for the presentation. And it mirrored the secondary one that we got two weeks ago in a lot of ways. But I think one of the fundamental ways it was a difference was particularly from hearing directly from our site leaders and the willingness to quickly pivot when something wasn't working. And half of me wonders if that's a function of just how sites are run at the secondary versus primary level. But, and I'll continue to ponder that a little bit. But I just wanted to reflect that and offer appreciation for that fact that you're very in tune to the needs of your site and ready to make moves as needed. It's the first time I've heard now a couple of times the term strategic abandonment. I think that's key to making sure that these funds are going towards positive outcomes for our students. And I appreciate your willingness to do that. I think oftentimes, we're afraid to do something because it might not work out. And sometimes that hinders progress. But instead, a lot of our site leaders have said, "We're going to try it. We're going to see what happens. We're not going to be afraid of failure because it could work. And if it doesn't, we'll just shift to something else." So that was something that really stood out in the site presentations, and I just wanted to express my gratitude and make note of that. Thank you.
Ms. Costa.
I'd like to echo what my colleagues have said. I know I have been saying since we first started hearing the reports that I don't know what we'll do when we don't have these funds because sites have just... I haven't talked to anyone at any site who doesn't say this has made a huge difference for every student that has had a chance to touch a piece of it. And hearing your report tonight from your two schools confirms that. I really especially like the local control aspect of this, that sites are doing what is good for their students. And I also appreciate the fact that the all, that the elementary leadership pivoted and made a change after they heard from sites. And that really, I think, says a lot about the leadership we have and about the work that's going on at our schools. So thank you. I hope we find some magical funds that allows us to continue this work.
Mr. Abey?
Thank you. It has been interesting hearing the different perspectives on what's working because each school I visit, they feel very passionately about the choice that they made. And it's different each time. I think I was a little bit surprised on the school tutoring that that wasn't used more. I'm curious, was there any kind of a theme on why that wasn't particularly, I mean, helpful or just why folks? And I will say, I did hear intervention specialist IA and counselors when I talked to our principals, but do you have any idea why people didn't choose?
I'll give it my best shot, and then if you all have something to add. The tutoring happens before and after school, and it's a little bit more challenging to get those schedules to work out for families or for staff. So that has been one of the challenges. Is there anything else that you all want to add?
We do have tutoring on our campus as well. Just maybe not as much as we hope, but we do offer it.
So the activities during the school day seem to be more, a little bit more impactful because it's more accessible. Okay. And then I did also just want to say thank you for the preliminary intervention data on reading and math. Very excited about the reading on the math. I think it's a data point. It's going to help us learn, right? What's working? Where can we change? Where can we adapt? So I appreciate you bringing that forward. Yeah, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
For Hernandez.
Thank you. Just to dive a little deeper, when Mr. Abey said on slide number 13 on the reading and math, on the fourth, this is at the Dedderding, fourth through sixth graders reading. Thirty-two students were receiving services. And 11% of those 32 are at grade levels. Is that correct?
That's the percent of the grade level that's receiving. That's not their achievement level. That's the percent of students at the grade level that are receiving intervention services.
Thank you for that. To me, I thought, "Well, that means 28 are not at grade level, 28 students."
Correct.
Okay, thank you for clarification.
Okay, it's wonderful to see you, you two administrators, doing what you do every four more weeks. I know that we're all counting down. You can't tell that I am. I'm going to try not to be redundant and repeat the same thoughts that I have for my colleagues about the money. We've needed this money pre-pandemic, and we're going to need it post. I probably shouldn't say post, but we still need it. I'll say it like that. So I too have concerns, but your willingness to come and share your school site story does provide some data points, right? It provides, we do have the numbers, but to hear directly from you what is working and the changes you were able to make at your community, in your community, in your school community is huge. And I'm hoping that some state leaders and others that get to hear, you know, as they get to hear the real-life impacts, that that will impact future decision-making. I said I was going to try to not be redundant, but I'm going to say this one thing. We had the opportunity to throw noodles at the wall and see what sticks in education, and we never ever have that opportunity. And the courage that that takes to try and then shift is huge, and we learned a whole lot from that. I know when I go on my school site visits, the IAs, BIAs, social emotionalists, I mean, it's changing lives again, and how do we rip that away, I don't know. So I really do like that term strategic abandonment. We can hopefully shift some dollars. I mean, that's going in my butt. I have to use that all the time now. We could shift some dollars that maybe could be, you know, were used in one way in the past. But we know that we don't have a whole heck of a lot of flexibility. So I appreciate your report very much. I appreciate all that you do every single day for kids. I know that it's a whole lot, it's an intense job that you have. And I just want you to know that you're appreciated, and the information that you provided today was really, really helpful. So thank you. Debrin Tannen, Bassinelli.
I just wanted to add, and I know that we've talked about this as a board, but just as a reminder and also for the public, that we continue to measure impact of actions to look to see in the future what we might be able to incorporate in our local control accountability plan for sustainability long-term. There is not an endless amount of money, though, that's available. So it will require difficult decisions around what So it will require difficult decisions around what do we continue versus also what we abandon. But that is very much on our, that's in our line of sight, and that's something that we'll be working on together.
Thank you for that. We are at item I three, Department of Toxic Substance Control Preliminary Endangerment Assessment for Catherine Johnson Middle School. Mr. Carmota.
Thank you, President Creason, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Bassinelli, and Ms. Cunningham. The district has submitted the results of a preliminary endangerment assessment, otherwise known as a PEA. That's a draft of the Department of Toxic Substance Control for review and approval. The PEA includes an assessment of whether hazardous materials are present, and if so, whether the materials are present at concentrations that will require cleanup before implementing the school construction project. Pursuant to the Department of Toxic Substance Control requirements, the district is providing a thirty-day public review period and comment period for the draft PEA report, and that started on April eighteenth of two thousand twenty-three. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity, a live opportunity to provide comments verbally or in writing to the board. And all the comments that are received tonight in this process shall be forwarded to the Department of Substance Control for consideration. I have staff here and also consultants that prepared this report. If there's some technical questions that the board may have that need technical expertise, we have Mr. Matthew Gurkin with us tonight. The board has met Mr. Gurkin through the environmental impact report process. We also have Mr. Ed Tarter here as well from AECOM, who assists us in in everything environmental and especially on the preliminary endangerment assessment report. And we also have for general questions about the construction project, if they should come up, Director Nick Arps, and then we have Martha Estrada here as well, one of our program managers. So I have a team here. If the board has questions, we'll be glad to answer those. So I will read the superintendent's recommendation. The superintendent is recommending that the board hold a public hearing to receive public comment on the preliminary endangerment assessment for Catherine Middle School, Catherine Johnson Middle School Project, number zero five five dash nine five one two dash P one. Thank you.
I declare the topic of the Department of Toxic Substance Control Preliminary Endangerment Endangerment Assessment for Catherine Johnson Middle School a public hearing, and it is now open for public comment. We do have public comment. Ms. Ryan?
Yeah, of course. And just a reminder, public comments are limited to two minutes, and the clock on the wall will count down the time. We do have one public comment. Mr. Michael Seaman.
Thank you. I'm Michael Seaman, District Resident. Whenever I see an egregious error in a public document, my baloney warning system goes off. And indeed, there is such a blatant error in your PEA report. On page one-one, the report states, water and sewer services for the school will be provided by the municipal systems of the City of Sacramento Utilities Department. Nope. The Creekside site gets its water from the Sacramento Suburban Water District, and sewer services are provided by Sacramento County. Now, that statement in the PEA report reminds me of the way your district handled the SEQA document for the project. You just wrote some words, offered them up for public comment, ignored the comments, and moved on. Why should the PEA be any different? Essentially, it says to the state, you spent a lot of money acting like you're doing due diligence. And gosh, look, there aren't any significant problems at the site. But I wonder, have you told the state that the need for the six hundred and fifty-student middle school at Creekside wasn't in the district's master facilities plan? The one that ostensibly guided your measure P bond? Have you told them that the voters were not told the measure P bond money would be spent on the specific project? Or that the required bond oversight committee did not take place? Did you let them know the site's in a designated environmental justice area? Did you tell the state that your district made a discretionary decision to approve the project a full five months before you started the required SEQA analysis? Did you tell them you refused to mitigate your pre-selected campus buildings because you had already locked in the design before seeking public input? I mention these points because your agenda item specifically says you will provide the Department of Toxic Substances Control with the public comments. I expect you to keep your word. Thank you.
And that was our final public comment. There being no further comments, I declare the public hearing closed. Do any board members have comments or questions? Seeing none. Thank you so much for the information.
Thank you.
Seaman.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry, Ms. Krevcheck? I'm sorry, I didn't see your mic going.
Oh, that's okay. Mr. Carmota, I just wondered, I don't know if that impacts the information that we received, the public comment that we received regarding the water and sewer. Does that change anything for us in our decision making?
I'll address Mr. Gurkin.
Turn on your mic, please.
I think this is a material change needs to be made within to clarify the sewer and water district. I think it's just an error, and it can be quickly fixed.
Okay, thank you.
And I can confirm with 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 Ed Tarter or Mr. Gurkin. And the answer is yes, it can be correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I apologize again, Ms. Krevcheck.
No problem.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We are at item I four, CSCA's initial proposal for contract reopeners, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Thickepin.
Good evening, President Creason, Board Member, Superintendent Bassinelli, and Ms. Cunningham. I'm here to present CSCA's proposal for contract reopeners for twenty-three, twenty-four, and this proposal was presented for discussion on March twenty-fifth. Happy to answer any questions you may have this evening.
Any comments, questions from the board? Seeing none. We are at item I five, SJSA's initial proposal for contract reopeners, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Thickepin.
This is a similar item for San Juan Supervisors Association. Again, this was here on March twenty-fifth and happy to answer any questions on their behalf.
Any comments, questions? Seeing none. Thank you. We are at item I six, SJPEC's initial proposal for contract reopeners, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Thickepin.
This was also part of the package of proposals you had from our employee group partners on March twenty-fifth. This is our San Juan Professional Educators Coalition, and happy to answer any questions that come up this evening.
Any comments, questions? Seeing none. Thank you so much. We are at item I seven, the district's initial proposal with SJTA. Mr. Thickepin.
I'm here tonight to present the superintendent's recommendation to adopt the district's bargaining interests with the San Juan Teachers Association for twenty-three, twenty-four contract reopeners. And again, these were presented to the board for discussion on the twenty-fifth.
Do any board members have comments or questions? This is an action item. Is there a motion to adopt district's bargaining interest with the San Juan Teachers Association for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four? Moved by Ms. Viescas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That was unanimous. We are on item I eight, presentation of the district's initial bargaining proposal with CSCA. Mr. Thickepin.
Thank you. These next three items are the first time you'll see the district's proposals for contract negotiations this year. This first one is for CSCA.
Any comments, questions? This item will come back on May twenty-third for public comment and actions. We are at item I nine, presentation of the district's initial bargaining proposal with SJSA. Thickepin.
Thank you. These are the San Juan Supervisors Association's, I'm sorry, the district's initial proposal with the San Juan Supervisors Association.
Any comments, questions? This item will come back on May twenty-third for public comment and action. We are at item I ten, presentation of the district's initial bargaining proposal with SJPEC. Mr. Thickepin.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to present the district's bargaining interest with the San Juan Professional Educators Coalition for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four contract bargaining year. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any comments or questions? This item will come back on May twenty-third for public comment and action. I'm just giggling because you say something so many times, like, did I say that right? At least I do that.
And I did almost forget the word.
Pretty sure that's what I just witnessed. Yeah. That's why I'm giggling up here. So thank you so much, Mr. Thickepin. Appreciate it. We are at item J, board reports. Are there any board reports? Ms. Costa.
I had the joy, and I do mean joy, of attending the San Juan Spirit of San Juan Awards. And it was honoring these staff members and students was absolute total joy. They were such fine representatives of our district, of their schools, of everything that's right about San Juan. I don't think you could walk away from there. I don't care what mood you were in when you got there. You couldn't walk away from there, just feeling complete pride, honor, and happiness at what was happening. And staff did an amazing job. It was one of those events, in my emails, thank you emails, I said it was a ten plus out of ten. There was not one thing that I would have changed about that evening. Just an amazing event that represents what is right about the city.
That's awesome. Any other board reports? Mr. Abey.
Got a few.
Okay.
I'll I'll start with, I missed the last meeting. I was actually at Capitol to Capitol with about four hundred other Sacramento leaders to discuss Sacramento issues with members of Congress, the administration. I was there for healthcare with my day job, but I was able to sit in on a meeting with the education team in the office of Senator Dianne Feinstein. I will say, at least within the business community, there was a lot of really good conversation around CTE and the the need for for workers, for especially entry-level people that can kind of grow into positions. It was a rather hot topic throughout, so it was it was good to participate. As I mentioned earlier, I did go to the SEAL by Literacy Awards. We had a very good delegation from San Juan Unified, not that we're competing, but we had a very good delegation, and I was pretty proud to be there. I also was able to attend, at Mr. Hernandez's invitation, the Kids Helping Kids Gala, an excellent nonprofit. I have to say, from an experiential learning perspective, it has got to be one of the best programs that we have in the district. Yeah, so hands down, congratulations to you. I know you're on the board, so it was another great event. But I think most most impactful from my board report, I went to sixth-grade camp. It was fantastic. I actually went back to Point Bonita, which is where I went for sixth-grade camp with my daughter's class. It was amazing. If you ever have the chance, I would highly recommend it. And again, it speaks to that experiential learning aspect of it. It speaks to field trips. It speaks to the impact of getting kids out of their normal environment to learn. It was amazing. I think one of the most impactful things for me was I said that I went there in sixth grade. When I got there, as we were looking around, and I'll post this later, there's actually a bench dedicated to my sixth-grade teacher, Mark Fisher. Some of the people here may know Mr. Fisher. He actually was one of the first elementary school teachers that started taking classes up to Point Bonita after the YMCA took it over in the early eighties. So when I walked up, and it's on this great spot overlooking the ocean, and it says, Mark Fisher, always a friend, always a teacher, always near. Hope you have the time of your life. Happy trails. So I thought that was nice. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Abey. Any other board reports? All right, we are on item K, future agenda items. Do any board members wish to add any ideas to the future agenda? We do, okay, we do not need to return to closed session, so we are adjourned.